I'd like to call the meeting in order at 6:03. And we have a very special warrant tonight, and I'll let Darius take over.
All right. Amy, everyone. I have Ms. Emily Loss here with her father, Alan. And Emily has been awarded by me the Superintendent's Award for Excellence. And she was recognized at the dinner at Franklin Tech during December. But I want to read, I kind of edited down slightly Emily from the other night, it was a little long. There's so many wonderful things to say about Emily. And I'm kind of excited about giving her this award tonight, especially on camera, so the whole community can know about her. So I'm going to kind of read her, my little speech resume about her. During her years here at Frontier Regional, Emily has maintained in maximum honors and is at the top of her class with a 4.5 GPA, which is pretty impressive. In addition to her academic success, Emily is the Vice President for two years and is serving as President of Student Government during her senior year. She's a Student Council member since ninth grade, represents on the school's match wits team, Vice President of the National Honor Society during her senior year. She's a Tri-M music honor society. She has received the University of Rochester Book Award, Kodak George Eastman Young Leaders Award. She is also the Team Captain of the Frontier Cross Country Team, a member of the Frontier Track Team, as well as a Pioneer Valley All-Star for three years and an All-Star Athlete in Emily also has a special love for music. She started playing the trombone in fifth grade. She is a member of the Frontier Band. She is also part of the MNEA Western District, from eighth to eleventh grade, the Jazz Band, the Franklin County Honor Band, the Qualmton Valley Band, and is the Band Council President her senior year. She's also served on a telethon community, the Telethon Committee, to help raise money for the Frontier Arts. Other clubs and interests, she's a member of the Kind Versity Club, the Environmental Club, the Community Service Club, and she's also is performing two musicals, Guys and Dolls and The Witches of Oz. And she's also part of the Little Shovel Horses this year, correct?
Yes.
You also may remember more closely this committee, last year Emily helped lead the student walkout in response to the Parkland shooting. And assembled a group of students to attend this meeting where she gave a powerful speech on school violence in America. Emily has shown she's not only is a leader, but she wants to make sure her voice is heard in the world. Jeremy Rogers, a history teacher at Frontier, gave me a nice summary of Emily. He said, "In the 20 years of teaching at Frontier, I've seen every student, I've seen how every student has passion for causes and subjects that interest them." After seeing Emily almost daily over the past four years, she is the first student who I've seen who has a passion for everything. She's involved in a huge number of projects, extracurriculars, music, theater, sports, and other activities. In fact, every time I go to the school event, Emily is there, you're taking part, or finding a way to help support it. She has a keen sense of right and wrong, puts a lot of effort into a fight for what she believes. Emily will lead Frontier, well, things must come to an end. This spring, it go off to impress the world. She is interested in majoring in physics, a four-year university or college, and is waiting on accepted letters from Harvard, Brown, Tufts University, Boston University, and local schools, including Mount Holyoke College and the University of Massachusetts. So, with great pleasure, I give you Emily Loss, this year's recipient of the Superintendent's Award. (applause) Hi, guys. Tuesday night. So, there we are.
Sweet.
Dad's going to take a picture. So, you're going to get in the picture with me. All right. Very good. So, I know it's one of those things that go back and forth, but I'm going to have you take. And I will find something to give you on awards night for your senior class, all right? So, congratulations, you are a true gift to our school and community. Thank you.
Good luck.
And she goes to class. Bob asked, "Does she have time to go to classes?" And yes. That's where that 4.5 GPA comes in, which is out of a 4-0 scale, that's kind of impressive.
It's called a bonus.
Yeah, it's some bonus in there.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Next review and approve the minutes from December 11.
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor?
Yeah, I'll try to.
Okay, where is she? It's your turn.
It's my turn.
It's your turn.
All the warrants have got around a bit signed, thank you very much. I'm Judy Hoole, for those of you I haven't met yet, the other half of the Business Management Team from the Management Solution. So, I did send out the December results to you. Couple of things that, you know, I'm looking at some of the lines, and there are some things that we certainly need to take a look at in terms of where we stand with those and whether or not we need to start doing some transfers and looking at those things. So, we'll be working with George on that shortly to make sure that we're in a good place. Because this is now the halfway point of the year, so this is a good time for us to do our due diligence in terms of looking at the budget in total, looking at our revenue streams, looking at where we stand and trying to project out to the end of the year so that we know that you're in a good place, both at the local level as well as with your revolving grant accounts. So, that's what we'll be doing between now and the next school committee meeting, so we can bring that information back to you, as well as, you know, again, taking a look at some of the lines that, you know, certainly need some attention and some cleaning up. Budgets are snapshot in time, so it always tends to sort of change over time as the needs of the kids change, so you want to make sure that we're spending accurately and projecting accurately.
Bob, you have any questions? I always pick on you because you always have questions.
I went through and I provided Judy the list of my concerns. I imagine that she would take a good look at it.
Well, I know.
I think it would save 20 minutes' time.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Does anybody else have any questions?
Can I just get the total number warrants in the dollar amount? Do you have that information? We have 12 total warrants. And these warrant totaled up, so if you could give me a couple of seconds, I can give you the total amount. Or you can pass it to me. Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for Judy?
The only thing is, when I went through the warrants.
Yes, sir.
We bought oil.
We know.
No.
Yet.
More than crucially.
Another one. Yes. More than the 1,500 a couple of weeks ago?
Yep.
Judy says.
I read the warrants.
Okay. We've got to make sure that when you...
It's part of my record. I passed it on to our attorney representing us, and they're currently finalizing that deal. And I think they're trying to get a signing, even the 20th, 21st was the latest email that went out today. So, it's inactive, it's in action right now.
It's important we not freeze the process. I don't want to have to be damaged.
No, it's, and, yeah, so, for the last time, I passed that along.
Any public comment out there tonight? Okay. Student Advisory Council person, George?
They weren't able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Frontier Regional Building Renovations Subcommittee. Everybody must have got...
Did you groan over their bill?
Yes, he did.
It's a lot of hard work out there on this. Should be happy, this is a, you're near the finish line.
Home stretch.
In a sense of where we wanted to get.
That's right.
So, I did hand out, we should have this particular one that says capital plan in the corner. You, well, you sat down on a spot where I didn't leave a seat. There you go.
I'll sit up.
No, I had two extras, so that would make sense.
Thank you.
Did you also want, did you get a copy of the...
I just got the one.
Okay, I can't give out any more. I got to tell you, this was a, as you know, there's been a lot of back and forth, and I, it sounds, I'm not the one that gives out mushy compliments, but often, at least not beyond my kids. But this committee kind of came a long way over the last year, really understanding this material and coming forward with what we have tonight. And I know Bob's going to interject some thoughts on this, even at this point. But what we did is, is we took the major needs and put those forward for the, I forget what we talked about at the last meeting, there's been so many sub-meeting times. We took the major needs within this plan and are looking to fund the other...
Other group of...
The other group of, I just don't happen to have an on-site paper handout. The listing of other things through E&amp;D and for the annual budget. And so, you know, and I have to get a copy of that out to people, I realize that I have the copies of this made, but she didn't do the last two pages. And so...
Is there a copier?
Yeah, there is.
You must have had that before.
So, this is what was sent out originally, but that was two extra pages, and that wasn't part of the packet that was created. I really, I need to sneak away and make that, because without it, I think you guys would be half blind on this. So, Sarah Mitchell is right here, and I have the packet. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
So, we continue going on. So, what we did is, we took the major needs, which are the higher-priced items that were scattered through the plan, and we're putting those forward for what we're borrowing against. There was a lot of concerns about the amount of small number of projects, the oversight of those projects, and to simplify that, we decided to shift things around and put the deferred maintenance issues that we've had and some of those smaller capital projects to be taken care of at the budgets, out of E&amp;D, and also out of capital improvement to the towns. Not this year, but in future years, future years. So, handling those smaller ones. So, if you can see, looking underneath where it says modified capital plan, you can see the different projects that we have. We also changed from the last, from the last plan, the oversight. It was a general oversight of $45,000, as you may have remembered, that went through 10 years. We cut that back to make it about 10% of the project, 5% of the track, the track being one project, you know, the $60,000 oversight, and really within the first five years of those projects. If you had it spread over 10 years of oversight, that didn't make sense. And so, basically, that's what you're seeing of the total look at what we're borrowing for 1.8 million to 26,664. And I guess looking at questions and other committee members, time in.
The last time the Subcommittee met, we came to a number of 1,998,200 as where we felt we would be comfortable. And the numbers that Joe has worked up are a little bit less, but I would be more comfortable going with the 1,998,200, because it gives us some room for some contingency. If something goes wrong, we don't want to have to come back and bleed. We'd like to be able to, you know, but if the board only wants to report the lower figure, so that, nobody's going to sit here and object, okay?
Can you reverse engineer, what is, what's missing from this 1,82664 that was in our 1,999?
That's in my car.
The oversight.
Does the oversight...
Basically, nothing else is missing.
That's what Joe said as well.
The one pager?
Yes, one pager. We also did the oversight, you know, beyond, not just that, but we had to oversee the track over multiple years in that last one.
And I think that was 40...
So, you can use that.
That was 45 a year, if I remember right from the oversight, for...
10 years.
For 10 years.
So, anyway, the 1,998,200 is more, but it would, gives us a, the board a greater contingency to handle the problems. It's up to the board, wherever they want. Where we want to go. The object of the ballgame is, we've got so much money in E&amp;D account as soon as it gets certified. Thought is to take about half of it, just my thoughts, is to take half of it and put it into a stabilization account, and take, and take a quarter of it and use that for the rest of these items that are on the list that we're not taking care of, and let's pick off 100, 125,000 worth of stuff and get it done. And then take the other quarter and leave it in the E&amp;D account, so if we have something else comes up during the year, we're there. But that's not cast in stone, people can go off with their own plan. Right now, we can retain 5% of our budget in the E&amp;D account, and we haven't exceeded it in the past, and we're, you know, we're close, but we're not over the 5%.
You know, Bob was talking about, I'm not sure if you're talking about the other 50%. Bob's thinking about taking the other 50% and put it towards the assessment. Well, there's two ways to look at it. Yeah, you can do it that way. It's either give them the, take it toward the assessment or put it towards these projects. You've got to pay for them somehow, somehow from the four towns. So, instead of giving it back to lawyer assessment to the towns, we take down, we take 50% of the products, of the money in E&amp;D, and we take care of $250,000 worth of stuff if it's 500,000 in E&amp;D. That's how I look at it.
And I think you bring up a good point, in the sense of when the towns are talking about, why didn't you put money toward, you know, fixing some of these problems prior to this, and you kind of went round and round, but when you're talking about, we're taking the very money from the pool, E&amp;D, to offset the assessments, we very well could be keeping that, and you have assessments that aren't agreeable with town. So, I think we're going to probably, I imagine we're going to want to go with some kind of balance on that moving forward. And McNair Subcommittee did talk about a percentage to put, knock down the assessments, a percentage to go to the capital improvement fund, and then knocking off some of these with that. And then we also leave a little bit for the, whatever you can, the boiler fund, as they always say in these kind of things, you know, that, you know, where you have a catastrophic thing that could, that needs 100,000, 200,000 dollars.
We had 352 in E&amp;D last year when the budget process started, and we used 60 to correct that insurance pool. So, there was roughly 300, a little under 300 left altogether. We used some of it towards the budget, kept the rest. So, that's, I don't know how the number's going to, what the number's going to be this year. But it's not, you know, it's not 500,000 or 600,000, so I don't want anybody to get the idea that, at least I don't think it's going to be.
The number that I'm hearing is in the 500,000 dollar range.
Well, okay, I'd be happy to be wrong.
Okay, but that's what I'm hearing, and, but it's not certified.
It's not certified.
So, don't spend it until we get it certified, but that's the number. Haven't been given any indication that it's less.
When do they certify ours?
Supposed to be a 24-hour thing, once they send the corrected information, and this they, they talked to Judy about it today.
So, they submitted it, they sent back information for them to correct. TMS supposed to correct it and send it back, and it's from last week. I'm hoping that it would be happening any moment, you know, that they'd send it off. If they didn't send it off yesterday or today, I'll ask them again. We're at, but ask them.
I mean, I guess I want to know, is, is the towns expecting us every year to take money out of the E&amp;D for the assessment?
I don't think so. At least the force department, that we're a part of this study, they're not, they're not espousing to do that, all right? They want us to solve our problems.
But at the same time, they also want our assessments to the towns to be within the range of what their revenues are. And so, we get there, and that's what we try to do, is to keep, remember, it's a big game that we're playing, we're trying to keep the services that we have in this building, you know, not dropping any services, meaning programs for the kids, and keeping it affordable to the towns. So, if we are, you know, we're going to throw a, I'll throw a crazy number out there, so we're not, whatever, if we throw a 20% increase to the town, you know, I'm doing a crazy number, but we do that kind of, if we do that kind of number, and they, you know, they can't afford it, so they vote down our budget, then, you know, so we've got to, we've got to, you know, working back and forth. But I do believe that we're in a spot where we can use a portion, and I think we're going to have a good year in the sense where there, there may be, maybe 100,000 dollars to go toward these capital things, and maybe 100,000, that 100,000 dollars is a big deal to knocking off, remember in the past, a percentage point is around 100,000 dollars.
Yeah.
So, if we come in with a, you know, we're talking right now in the budget, you know, we're not, there's no new things coming in the budget programatically. So, you know...
But, you know, we spent a lot of money, the warrants we signed tonight, there was 18,000 dollars for these splits in this room. You know, that was never budgeted, to my knowledge.
Correct.
Correct. And, you know, we've got some other things. We do things all the time, and...
In the sense of repairs and such?
Yeah.
Yes, and so, in the splits, I'm going to be coming back and looking for some of the E&amp;D money to pay for, or we're going to have to find other spots in the budget.
We're going to have to transfer some money from one of your existing accounts to cover.
Correct.
But they did see it.
Right. So, I think I talked a little bit about that last time.
It was the cheapest solution to the problem in this room.
Yes.
Switz.
Yes. Bravo. So, anyway, it's at the board's pleasure, if they want to move forward and vote the bonding authorization, or we could put it off until the meeting we're having on the 22nd, and we could do it that night after the combined meeting, or we could do it tonight. And might be better off doing it on the 22nd, so we have all the legal keys properly written as to what the particular chapter, verse, and authorizations.
Is, I don't want anybody to be surprised, reading in the paper tomorrow that we authorized this number.
No.
Okay, because the last thing you want to do right now is shoot yourself in the foot. You guys have come way too far to do that. So, if we need to wait until the next meeting, so we can notify the four towns, this is the number we're looking at, we're going to do it on the 22nd.
The four towns know it already.
One person from each of the board knows.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. But they've also passed it on to their...
And finance committees that come to meetings, the long-term planning committees that come to our meetings, everybody's on board.
Billy's right. We, the chairman could send a nice letter to the chairman of board, like, on the four towns, and say, "The board, the regional school committee intends to put forth a borrowing authorization on the January 22nd to handle the long-term needs of, as I'm like, Subcommittee, etc."
Because that, the member that Darius got today from the town awake, he suggests that their capital planning purposes, they would like to know as soon as possible, but I do not want them to know by picking up the recorder tomorrow. Oh, see what those guys voted on last night?
I know.
That's, please don't, that's a bad idea.
I would, you know, just the way, and I, you know, we want to, if that's the, I think it makes sense. I think we've been trying to be very transparent, but I think one last one where I will send it out to, the question we'll have tonight is whether or not we make the adjustment Bob's recommending, putting it, moving the number back, back to the 1,998 number, which has a little more contingency money in. Because you've got to remember, those numbers are as fluid as the market. You know, a sheet of plywood, even though there's no plywood project here, but this is what Joe would use as an example, you know, you know, a flat plate of plywood can cost thousands from one day to the next, basically, depending on the project. So, you know, some of these projects, there may be some fluctuation. Those are the numbers that were given, you know, through the research, but there's, they're going to adjust. I like a little, you know, we are confined to, I know concerns at home, as soon as you ask for more, what are you going to do with that extra money? We're confined to this project, and if we come in with savings, the hope is that we do come in with savings. And we talked about some of these energy ones, we're going to go after energy grants to help offset the cost of those. And so, we're going to try to find, we're going to try to get the number lower, I mean, that's the game plan and all these things, between either energy grants or, you know...
Because we can't go after those until we approve...
We can't go after that until we have the money. We can't have someone come in and give us a full bid until we have the money to put a project moving forward.
This adds up. You take the calculator, and you go boom, 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 and you arrive at this number. Contingency is always one of those words that everybody thinks you're hiding behind when you put contingency money in. This adds up. Bang, 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 this is what it costs. Here it is, fellas. Yep. That's it. That's as transparent as it gets.
And this is going to happen in the first year or two at the most, right? These, these projects here are going to happen...
The idea is over the first five years.
Or less.
Right. It all depends on, again...
The number between this and 1,998,200.
I'm finding, I think it can go either way, I'm of the pleasure.
I just think that the Subcommittee recommended that number that night, and Bobby was here, the whole committee was there, and that's the number we recommended. Joe, when he did the, put this thing together, he comes up with a little bit lesser number. You know, it doesn't make much difference to me, other than I'd be more comfortable that we got enough to do it, we said we were going to do it, and so that we can do it and do it right.
But if they're, like Bill was saying, if they're looking at this list, track 600, this, 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 it adds up to that. It doesn't add up to 1,998,200.
Well, you just, unless you try to find some more things.
You put another line down, down underneath it, overall contingency, and, and, you know, whether we use it, if we don't use it, it's going to come back, okay?
Yeah, the only thing is, the math was, I'm sorry. The only thing is, the math, like, we were just operating on that 45,000, like, that math was inaccurate. We just took that placeholder for the oversight that we had popped into the 10 years. And so, if the 10% oversight or the 5% oversight, the other thing that was with, combined with that, was a policy, right? That we were going to request oversight for capital expenditures over, we just tossed around a number, we agreed to a number, and we don't have a policy on the agenda. So, like, I get what you're saying, I'm not inclined to increase the number, I'm inclined to leave the number as it is, and, and, because the, I think the intention is there, our math might have been fuzzy, we agreed to a number, but I think that the reality of the numbers on the sheet reflects the intention of the Subcommittee.
Why don't we go forward with that, and then we eliminate the, you know, the questions?
I know what you're saying about the, I know what you're saying about, like, a buffer, everybody wants a buffer, but if the Subcommittee, the newly-formed Subcommittee, like, if that we're lucky enough to get this implemented, and everything works out the way we planned, and the Subcommittee and the oversight people are willing, are able to get grants and other savings, and we're able to chop away at it with E&amp;D over the year, or whatever, whatever our plan is, I think we actually will come in, even accounting for the increase in expenses due to all the other material costs.
I can go with all of it, but I just wanted to present the fact that that's what the Subcommittee came up with.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, I'm not going to get upset if we don't get the higher number.
That's my opinion. Do you want to make the motion? Are we voting? Okay, auto motion.
I'm making a motion right now, that we vote this number that you brought to us, and I will, it's a PS, I think, I think we need to be as transparent as we're being, and I, I agree.
The question was whether or not to make, to move this vote to the 22nd, and then also disseminate this to everyone, so...
Tell them first.
So, that there's complete transparency. They know they were going, but they have not seen this final copy, because they knew it was going to send it to all the committees until you guys approved it.
But the lower number.
But we'll send, we'll send the exact, what was in front of you here, unless there's any other questions.
So, we just need a motion to table it until it...
No, just a motion to direct whoever's going to send the letter, to send the letter to the four towns with this number in it, tell them, "22nd."
Right, so tonight, we're tabling the vote.
Right.
So, tonight is...
But we're moving this, we're moving this draft forward to a vote, so kind of, it speeds up the next vote, because we know...
Exactly.
You know, does that make sense?
So, I do have one more question about this.
You can kind of do that.
The, at the bottom of the front page, first page, we're estimated, estimated tax rate impact if debt excluded. So, we know from, we know that there's at least one town that is very interested in doing a debt exclusion, but we don't know whether it is in the financial interests of the other three towns, and I'll just speak for my town, I don't know if it's in the, in the best interest of my town that's pursue that. But he's, he's providing a calculation as if it's already done.
He's just giving that as a reference point to what is that going to cost per, you know, $1,000 value, you know, so, or $100,000 value.
So, one of the things that I asked was, does he have any feedback or any, is there, what is the formula for determining when a debt should be, when a town should consider...
I think that's going to be up to the finance committees of each town to decide if they want to put it debt-excluded or not, right? Is that, that's my understanding of that. I can ask, I can ask Joe any question, he'll come to any meeting.
Can we also talk about, for the track, using CPA money for the track? I mean, if they want, if they want to, if people want to pay for the track portion that through CPA money, I mean... That we were gonna request oversight for capital expenditures over, we just tossed around a number, we agreed to a number, and we don't have a policy on the agenda. So, like, I get what you're saying. I'm not inclined to increase the number. I'm inclined to leave the number as it is, and, and, because the, I think the intention is there, our math might have been fuzzy, we agreed to a number, but I think that the reality of the numbers on the sheet reflects the intention of the subcommittee.
Why don't we go forward with that, and then we eliminate the, you know, the questions?
I know what you're saying about the, I know what you're saying about like a buffer, everybody wants a buffer, but if the, if the subcommittee, the newly formed subcommittee, like, if that, we're lucky enough to get this implemented and everything works out the way we planned, and the subcommittee and the oversight people are willing, or are able to get grants and other savings, and we're able to chop away at it with E and D over the year, or whatever, whatever our plan is, I think we actually will come in, even accounting for the increase in expenses due to all the other material costs.
I can, I can go with the lower number, but I just wanted to present the fact that that's what the subcommittee came up with.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, I'm not gonna get upset if we don't get the higher number. Sorry.
That's my opinion. Okay. Do you want to make the motion? Are we voting this?
So...
Okay, auto motion.
I'm making a motion right now that we vote this number that you brought to us, and I will, it's a PS, I think, I think we need to be as transparent as we're being, and I, I agree.
The question was whether or not to make, to move this vote to the 22nd and then also disseminate this to everyone so...
Tell them first.
So that there's complete transparency. They know they were going, but they have not seen this final copy, because they knew I wasn't gonna send it to all the committees until you guys approved it.
But we're, but the lower number.
But we'll send, we'll send the exact, what was in front of you here, unless there's any other questions.
So we just need a motion to table it until it...
No, just a motion to direct whoever's gonna send the letter to send the letter to the four towns with this note, number in it, tell them, oh, on the 22nd.
Right, so tonight we're tabling the vote.
Right.
Yes.
So tonight is... But we're moving this, we're moving this draft forward two of a vote, so kind of, it speeds up the next vote, because we know...
Exactly.
You know, does that make sense?
So I do have one more question about this.
You can kind of do that.
The, the, at the bottom of the front page, first page, we're estimated, estimated tax rate impact if debt excluded. So we know from, we know that there's at least one town that is very interested in doing a debt exclusion, but we don't know whether it is in the financial interests of the other three towns, and I'll just speak for my town, I don't know if it's in the financial best interest of my town that's pursue that, but he's, he's providing a calculation as if it's already done.
He's, he's just giving that as a reference point to what is that gonna cost per, you know, $1,000 value, you know, so, or $100,000 value.
So one of the things that I asked was, does he have any feedback or any, is there, what is the formula for determining when a debt should be, when a town should consider...
I think that's gonna be up to the finance committees of each town to decide if they wanna put it debt-excluded or not, right? Is that, that's my understanding of that. I can ask, I can ask Joe any question, he'll come to any meeting.
Can we also talk about, for the track, using CPA money for the track? I mean, if they want, if they wanna, if people wanna pay for the track portion that, through CPA money, I mean...
So that, there's options. That'd be part of your letter to select them, if they're interested in notifying them.
I don't think it's incumbent upon us to tell them how to do this. If they wanna debt exclude it, let them. If they wanna take it out of taxation, let them, but...
Yeah. I thought he said that at the meeting. I thought he said you can do whatever you wanna do based on whatever you need, but I also remember him saying he was willing to talk to anybody about it, so...
There's gotta be some formula that they use to, I mean, you don't debt exclude everything.
You'd exclude debt.
Right, right, but there's gotta be some, there's gotta, there's gotta be some rules to the road that, I don't know, I look like...
Well, I mean, you can understand why they do it, 'cause when, you know, for those, the debt exclusion is, it comes off the tax walls when we're done paying this off.
Right.
So you, your tax increase, it then comes, drops off. It doesn't stay on. If they don't debt exclude it, it stays on for...
Well, we have to make sure that the language is drafted, the motions are done properly, and, so I don't know, or can tell you exactly how to draw that.
I will find out, find someone who'll tell me how to do it.
Yeah. The other guys that are going to say we did it wrong, if we did it wrong, maybe the revenue's gonna, has a, has a, you know, a thing that, a draft or a template to make sure we do it, do it right.
Okay.
So I'll do it twice.
I agree. Do you guys wanna do a, a vote to table with this plan, or are we just...
I just did a request.
Request to do it, and that's fine, and please...
We're sending a notification to the boards of select finance committee to send it through.
As I wrote, a request that interim superintendent Darius Modesto sent notice to the select board chair of each town informing that the Frontier Regional School Committee intends to put forth the borrowing authorization in the amount of 1, yeah, a lot, 1-826-664 at the January 22nd, 2019 meeting of the, of the joint school, uh, no, it's not, it's our meeting.
We'll close, we'll close the joint meeting and then do the vote and then close that.
Yeah, to support the Frontier Regional Capital Plan.
Okay, we wanna do it early that night or...
We'll do it that. It's up to the chairs, I'm deciding how they wanna set it down.
Right.
I mean, it's not gonna, should we catch them to off guard? You know, this number's a lot lower than the, the previous one we gave, they know, they know what we're gonna do.
They're sitting there, we ordered the other number.
Yeah.
And everything was to keep it under two.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you.
That's the homestretch. Round of applause.
Well, we'll get there. Applause, yeah.
Nah, 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 stretch. Get his lines and say...
Okay, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this eighth grade trip since last time we couldn't do it, 'cause they had two different Washington DC trips.
So low.
Second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Uh, Frontier Regional School Capital Plan.
That's, you just saw...
Yeah, yeah.
A update 2019. Uh, update 2-2019 Christian Lane.
Um, so all our records are now stored under lock and key at Frontier, um, and we're starting to, now that they're here, we're starting to do the waiting process in-house. Um, I wasn't able to get the exact savings, we, you may have remembered that money was put aside to do a full digitization of them and such, and just to kind of, you already know where we're at, the central staff was not 100% behind that, going to that kind of, getting away from the paper product, um, and I didn't wanna spend that kind of money, and so we saved thousands and thousands of dollars doing it the way we just did it. So, um, I didn't have the exact numbers, and I probably tried to go find them, so I could get a big pat on the back, but in the end, um, we did save money because, you know, basically we moved them from one area, thinned them out, put them in a cab, and filed a closet here. I do thank Frontier for giving up another closet. Storage space is not, uh, is not easy in this building, but...
I heard that space is George's office.
I thought about getting on my office at one point. I started getting worried about it not fitting, I was like, okay, they'll go raid my office, I'm not gonna wear this for being wrong. But no, they do, they do for the most part, um, for the most part fit, and, um, a lot of those files are rolling files, and they get turned over every seven years, and some we keep forever, so, um, we did that, and we did the whole thing for just under $1,000 for the move of all those things.
Budgeted over...
We had budgeted over 20. I don't know what that exact number was, but that was also to include somebody else to go through our files, to digitize them, and also to organize them and weed them, and so we are gonna go through the weeding process ourselves. Um, I think the people who own the files and work with the files, my staff, want, don't want somebody else going through, by going through, you see what you have, be responsible for it, and, um, and that kind of thing, so, um, yeah, and so they're gonna create their own filing system, they know, you know, and actually, right now, the, the file system is more organized than it's ever been. It's by year, it's alphabetical, it's, you know, they, and now they can rotate out, do not destroy until whenever, you know, whether the due dates are, so, pretty good spots. We saved a lot of money there. Um, it's not to say that the last plan was a bad one, we just went a different direction.
So, you're looking for 17, 18,000 if they're gonna answer it.
I think that money's actually, I gotta find out exactly where that money is, I'll see if it's in E and D, if that's where it went to, 'cause I don't know where, within two different, I don't know exactly where that money is, I think it's in E and D, so, I don't think we're gonna see it as an extra call or anything. Right. I got it. I gotta figure that out. It's on my list. All right, so that's where we are there.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, the other one was the sale, right? Was that combined with the sale?
Well, it's on the next page, new business or something.
Is it? Oh, yeah, it is, we'll get to that. Sorry.
Uh, update on alternative posting methods?
So you'll see as part of your handout, we got a letter from the state that we can officially, for the, this is mostly for the public announcement, that we can post online, that our website is now considered the official posting place for regional meetings only. So those who serve in towns, we still have to do it the, I won't say old-fashioned way, the conventional way of having to, but we still are emailing all the towns, any postings that we're doing online, we're not making them go fetching it, we're gonna send it to them, but we don't have to wait for them to post it, we can post on our line here. And that's gonna, that's gonna save us sometimes when, if for some reason we had an emergency meeting on a Thursday, we then can make our next meeting on a Tuesday without having offices be open, you know, that kind of, where we would have, where sometimes they're not open on a Friday, or they're not open on a Monday. It was, you know, causes us headaches when we're trying to put in extra meetings and that kind of thing, so...
Especially town halls that close certain things.
That's, we, there are town halls that are closing Friday, that's why I said, we have a meeting on Thursday, and then you want a meeting the following week on Monday or Tuesday, sometimes you can't do it, because you haven't posted for 48 hours, now we can. So...
If they have any questions about that?
Okay. I think everything's on second, you got a letter from the state.
We have George and Sarah.
It's in your books.
George and Sarah, you're up next, adjusted high school schedule plans.
And there's a, and there's a handout coming around as well.
So, um, just to give you a little background, we've been talking for many, many years about how the schedule's not working, um, and if, if there was a perfect schedule out there, we would all have the same schedule across Western Mass. It was funny, because just as we, after we started looking at these pieces, Amherst came to visit our school to look at the block schedule in the split year, and we went on to other schools and looked at their schedules, and everyone's kind of grappling with this issue of how do you make more things fit into the day, while at the same time giving kids what they need, and giving them some downtime, and some, some opportunities to do some work. Um, but that said, there's been a lot of changes that have happened, um, in Frontier since, I think, 1992, 1998, um, 1998, when the original block schedule was adopted. We have gone from having two AP classes to having 14 AP class offerings. We've gone from having our requirements of two or three, um, classes in a content area to having four required classes in content areas. Some of this has come down to the state, some of these are things that we felt were important for students to have, um, and so towards that end, we're trying to fix the schedule enough so that we can, um, put a little bit more wiggle room in. Some of the other challenges that we had were, in the middle school, we have a geyser repair, which allows students to get extra help from teachers, and allows students to get a head start on, on homework. We don't have that at the high school level. Um, we have arts classes that are in conflict with other classes, so for example, the band block happens, and then a student who wants to take band is kind of blocked out, some of these other electives, or some of these other AP offerings, and it was just getting really challenging. Our kids are involved in more activities than ever. They're in after-school arts, they're in athletics, they're doing plays and musicals, uh, which are all great things, but they really put a lot of pressure on a student to, um, get a lot of things packed in. But Jer's gonna talk a little bit about some of the changes that we've made to the schedule in order to try to fix some of those issues.
And so in order to create the wiggle room, what's happened, so basically, what we created was what was initially called a skinning, so it was a 45-minute short block, uh, specifically at the high school level. Uh, so what this is gonna be doing, it's gonna be adding five additional credits each year to the high school, and so there are gonna be an increased number of credits now needed for graduation. Uh, students are gonna be required to take two and a half of these credits as a directed study. Uh, special ed skill classes will count towards this requirement. Um, band and strings will be offered during this 45-minute short block, um, and so only elective non-sigilant classes will be offered during the short block, so there won't be any competing classes for the performing arts classes. That was one of the things that we were trying to rectify, there was, there was, people wanted to be able to take arts, or they wanted to be able to take AP, and oftentimes, they're in conflict with each other, so, so the, the hope is that this will alleviate that conflict. Um, there is going to be a continued limit of 30 AP credits per year, uh, and, but we're also hoping, hoping down the line, we'll be able to offer more electives. Um, some of the, some of the things that we're gonna, we're considering, next year there's gonna be a sociology class that's gonna be offered, some of the things we're considering, uh, we're looking into an early, uh, we're hoping that we can work towards maybe doing early childhood, um, sports medicine or mythology, so we're hoping that this will sort of start, you know, providing breathing room, and, and once again alleviating some of the conflict that's been happening between, uh, students that wanted to take certain, uh, arts electives and AP courses, so, we're, we're hopeful. Um, if you wanted to take a look at the actual schedule, what it looks like, you flip it over, and it's, it's here.
Simple as pie.
Simple as pie, and...
It'll be a quiz, as you'd be. What time is cable?
We should give a shout out, I think we should give a shout out to Polly.
Yes.
To Polly Wosny, one of our middle school math teachers, for really helping, helping out with, with creating this schedule.
With the, with the middle school side.
Some people's minds...
So the goal was also to not impact what was happening at the middle school, because what we have at the middle school is working, and so we were trying to, um, reduce the impact of their schedule, and so we ended up making a few tweaky changes to the middle school side, and that's what Polly helped out with, was trying to figure out how to reduce the impact there.
What do the teachers think about it?
We've had a lot of conversations, so, um, I, I, actually, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, Allison, but, um, so there, I think everyone is at the point on the high school side of, we need to do something.
Yeah.
So let's try this and see if this does what we need it to do, and we'll reevaluate in a year and see where we are. So I think people are, some people are optimistic, some people are cautiously optimistic, and some people are in a wait-and-see pattern to see if, if this really does what we hope it will do.
I, I would say the majority of people are, are open to it, and then...
Do we know of any school system that doesn't, this now?
This exact model?
This exact model.
No. Um, there were...
That's good, if it works.
Yes.
Frontier will be on the map again.
We did look at a school, um, actually down in Pennsylvania, that had a five-block schedule, um, and we decided on this variation, because it was gonna create, it wasn't gonna solve what we needed it to solve, and that's why we ended up going with this.
Just to add in, though, because I think you're not gonna give yourself credit, and Allison can correct it, but this has been something that was not developed top-down, but with the teachers, there were, you guys had many, many meetings, not just from this year, but there's been subcommittees talking about the schedule and its problems, um, you know, this, this was, the final push was this year was the, you know, the option was that, we had to make a final push, so we came up with this, gone to the teachers back and forth, there's been a lot of communication, so this is not something that kind of, that was mandated top-down without input, and, and, you're nodding yes, that's correct, in the sense that it wasn't top-down, um, that way, so there has been, and so there is some, there are, is any new change, people are cautious about it, or, um, and there are some daysters, but for the most part, I think it's receiving, there's a positive reception to, let's try something, um, you know, and, and so I'm, I'm excited that you're, we've reached this point. I'm not excited I'm not in that seat to be there when it happens.
You can, you can come on down.
The only reason, the only reason I said about the teachers, you know, we're doing new contracts right now, so I didn't know if that was gonna interfere with our new contracts that we have going on at the high school level.
Talk about it there.
Can you talk about that in open session?
I know, my... I have one question. It says band and strings, is what are you gonna be offering in a short block, 45 minutes?
Yeah.
And, so, now, are you gonna be adequately able to take care of all the children that want to participate in that?
Yes, yes, yeah. So in the whole, and one of the goals was, um, to make sure that we weren't offering anything opposite that, so in other words, if we are still gonna offer electives during that short block, but it won't be an elective that's only offered during that short block. So for example, a health wand class, health wand would be offered during that 45, but there would also be long-block options for the health wand class, and so a student wouldn't be forced into a corner where they're having to choose between health wand and band. They could always take the band, and then they can take their health wand at another period of time.
But, well, the 45 minutes that's offered is gonna be sufficient to take care of the children that want the instructor?
Yes, it should be, yes, because it's gonna be 45 minutes every day, instead of 86 minutes every other day. So basically, we've cut the time in half, but we're offering it every day.
I just wanna make sure it works.
Yep. We'll see.
I mean, the idea is banned, for those who, banned runs a high school schedule, because it's the one class where everybody has to be in the class at once for it to be done properly, and it's, it's nine through 12. So you get all, the whole school, that has to be in one particular time, and so you can't have anything, so you, you know, it causes, if anybody, you know, works, if you work in a high school, you know that it's a, banned runs the schedule, so this is a way to remove that.
And isn't, during, um, middle school classes right now are shorter, they're not these long blocks, and they have it every day, so that would just be, they're just putting like, middle school band, like, in here, right?
Exactly.
So it'll be, and they'd be a real good stride.
And there's, and there's an argument also to say that offering something for a shorter period of time every day is more effective than longer on every other, because of stamina and everything, and all of those types of things, so...
So, um, I've got a question about the new electives, and I'm, I'm all for it, but the, um, the, the thing about new electives, I, that don't, I mean, don't they take a while for word of mouth to get out, that, whatever, and so is there a metric, you know, what, how low can enrollment be and still be carrying on? How many years are you gonna stick with it, you know, and...
Right.
Because with, with these things, when you got a kid, seven, eight, nine, they're looking at the schedule, they're looking at what they wanna take, they get to 11th grade when the things are, whatever, and then it's, low enrollment, we pulled it this year, and...
Right, right, and that is, and that's why we're not offering all of these all at once next year, so we're starting with sociology, because there's been interest in that. So we're starting with sociology, because there's been interest in that. We have a lot of independent studies that happen every year, and so the reason why we kind of pick these particular topics is because I sit through five or six physical therapy/sports medicine presentations for independent studies every year. Every single year, there's five of them. So if there's five of them, there's probably seven more students out there, 12 more students out there that are not doing the independent study, but would be interested in that topic. And so we're looking at it from that angle. As we expand how many credits students have to fill, we'll have room for more electives right now. But we've got to take baby steps, because we don't want to be in the situation where we're offering 10, and we have to cancel five every year. You know, you want to just kind of slowly increase.
It may be information overload, but the way we do it is there's a process where kids sign up, you look at the numbers, and then they re-sign up again based on things couldn't run because of enrollment. You know, I would say, you know, economics is a good class that shows that some years we have the numbers to run, and some years we're done. And so it does become a disappointment when it's enrolled. But that's another reason why we also rotate the APs every other year, so you can plan ahead, because you're not going to get enough enrollment in a single year. That way, you have, some of the APs.
There's also, there's also a wave, like, there's some things that are very popular for a period of time, and then it just starts to drift down, and then, you know, accounting is a good example. I mean, back 15 years ago, accounting was a very robust program, a very robust course, and the numbers drifted, 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 until they hit a point where it was no longer a viable program, because kids weren't interested in it.
It's a huge need for that in this area.
Yes, there is. We've had a business back then, but at a different.
Keith has a question.
Just a quick question. So is an AP class on an even day different than an AP class on an odd day? It's two different classes?
No, same class. So if you have a math, if you have Algebra I during A block, you have it at the beginning of the day on even days, and you have it at the end of the day on odd days.
So just wondering how if, if a health class is on a C period for 46 minutes, but another health class is offered in a different period for like a 70, how does that?
It's an every-other-day class. So we still, so we have, we still have split-block classes that run kind of on an AB schedule in other schools. So we have an A1 and an A2. And so some of those elective, like art classes, and so that's why, that's why we can do the math and do that split, because we've got that flexibility. Yeah, that was another fix, you know, years ago.
Bob, question, civics.
Civics, it's being embedded in social studies, it's now part of the new social studies standard, and so it's in grade eight heavily, but then it's also been interwoven into all of the other social studies classes, because it's a huge, huge emphasis in the new framework.
I know it's an emphasis, but back in the olden days, civics was A class.
Yes, and that, and essentially, it's taken over grade eight, and so what we're doing is we're doing a combination of civics and US1. We're still leaving the name of the course, US1, but it's a heavy civics component with the new standards.
Bob, did you take it back when you were a little kid?
Yes, and I had a teacher, but her name was Mrs. Kate. And it was, the classroom around the corner downstairs, just past the ladies room.
Is it still there, or is it locked up now?
It's there. Now it's still there.
Might be a question more for Mr. Sherrill. For kids who had to drop band, or who elected to drop band and take an AP course this year, will they be able to drop back in, even though they've not been?
I see no reason why he wouldn't take them back into band, yeah. Because it's, you know, they, they have kids of all sorts of different ability levels anyway to begin with, and he does a lot of differentiation in that class, so.
Mr. Sherrill most is.
Yes.
Anybody else have any more questions? Great presentation.
Yes, thank you.
We're excited. I think everybody's excited. Except for maybe the teacher.
No, they're kind of excited too.
Would you bring whatever school choice?
Okay, substitute teacher pay rate.
All right, so.
Simple.
Right, it's pretty straightforward. The Massachusetts has raised the minimum wage to $12 as of January 1st. Frontier pays for a six-hour and a quarter day for substitutes, which comes out to exactly $12 an hour. Okay, so at the $75 an hour rate we currently are, okay? The elementary schools, the way, because the way their schedule is and supervision's a little bit extended for drop-off and pickup, they have a six-and-a-half-hour day. So they fall just below the minimum wage at $11, and I forget the exact number, I brought it down somewhere, but I'm speaking without my nuts in front of me. So we had to raise that with the elementary schools. And I would like, my recommendation to the committee tonight is to keep Frontier in line with what we're paying subs for the elementary and Frontier at $80 an hour. It puts us in line with most of the other schools in our area. There are a couple that are, gone a little bit higher already. Next January, minimum wage in Massachusetts will go to $12.75. By 2023, it'll be around $15. So we're going to have to look at, the budget subcommittee was just talking about this prior to this meeting, but we're going to have to discuss about increasing the substitute line item slightly, and look at our usage and that kind of, that kind of thing, but I recommend at this point we, we keep things consistent, our subs across, even though it's a slightly different amount of time, because right now we do a daily statement for the day.
So. Exactly. Any other discussion?
Little discussion. It doesn't affect us, but next year it will, because it's a mandate, an unfunded mandate from the Commonwealth. We're, we're not required to do it at this point. The elementary schools are, but Frontier isn't, because we're already at the number. But next year, it's, next year, when we prepare the budget for next year, it's going to be an impact that is unfunded, and the state auditor normally pursues that and sees if we can reverse it. You know, it's not a lot of money, but it's still, it's an unfunded mandate.
It's an unfunded mandate for every small business, every restaurant, every diner who has an employee.
But there's a thing, there's a thing that says that the legislature can't do it to us.
But does it go to schools and public entities?
What's that?
It's also required, I was told it was not required.
I don't know.
Public entities.
The minimum wage applies.
But that public entities would be crazy not to do it, because the private industries are out. But I was told it was not a mandate process, not that I think it's not a good thing to do. I think the quicker we get to 15, the better, the better, the better we look for subs. But I don't, I don't believe it was a definite, even though I.
I think Sidney's right.
Totally support what we're doing.
I don't think, I don't, well.
I wish we could give a 15 mission. I wish we could.
Legal, legal, we'll check on it.
No, it, Sidney's right, both in the legality and in, it's still wise to do it as well, I think. But, but I think it's not an unfunded mandate, because it was a ballot measure and constitutional amendment, and those don't get subjected to that test either.
That was a constitutional amendment?
Yeah, it was a ballot measure.
I stand corrected, I haven't checked.
I know Sidney was talking about the quicker we get to 15, the better we be, but at this point of what we're paying 75 to 80, we're still getting good, qualified substitute people that want to come here and be substitute at Frontier and at our elementary schools, because we have great schools.
Oh, no, I said, I told you.
I'm going to say.
What we're doing, I just wish we could do it differently. Probably everybody here feels that way, but how we are doing it is at least acceptable.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Certificate of sale, F-219.
So, we made a vote on July 17th authorizing Phil Cantor to, to member the Frontier Regional School Committee to execute the sale. They would like, they being our attorney, and the selling attorney would like this exact language used moving forward, because the buyer has changed to an LLC, the purchase of this, and so that has to be, has to be put into the minutes, and then I got to make sure we give them a signed copy of the minutes as part of the legality of that, this bill that has authorized the sale of this building. So he just asked for a revote of it, and, you know, forward the minutes, and I'll let you copy it, but I'll just read it, and I'll hand it to you. To authorize Phil Cantor to member the Frontier Regional School District Committee to execute on behalf of the Frontier Regional Unit 3D School, there's a quitclaim deed and all other documents necessary to transfer the real property located 219 Christian Lane, Lot 2, Whitley, Mass., to Whitley School, Whitley, Mass., to Whitley Schoolhouse LLC for $1,000. And then I have to, I have to sign a certified statement that I am who I am, and I oversaw all that, but, so they would like that in the minutes, and that voted directly on the minutes. So really straightforward, you already voted at once, but it didn't have the LLC as the major.
So, does Phil have to sign this one, or?
Phil's going to have to sign it with a notary, and so Phil, you and I have to talk. We have a notary right here.
And I'll myself with me.
Ten bucks. Ten bucks.
I do it for free.
That's noted in the minutes.
Yeah.
So we have to vote on this, so.
Hold on, who seconded?
No one's on anything yet.
Oh, no, Olivia seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I didn't hear you.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
If you're unanimous, it's fine. You've got to declare it unanimous, because otherwise you have to have a roll call.
We can do that too, Bob.
Because it's a sale.
We want to do a roll call?
Declare unanimous.
Thank you, Bob.
Just want to make sure they don't come back at us again.
This is the one vote where it could come back, right?
Okay, N-E-S-D-E-C, Enrollment Report. Everybody got it? If you didn't get it?
Come here.
So Frontier's gone up slightly. Our school choice has also gone up the last few years, especially in the middle schools, where we'd have a cap, the overall enrollment. I think, again, you look at these numbers, they're difficult, and I think, and I remember a couple of years ago when this came out, and I think Bill probably brought it up and said, we were supposed to have over 1,000 students after the building renovation project of '98, and we never, we never got to that number. So, again, it's an informational piece to kind of look at where the trends are. Again, I have one for each of the schools, where you can see just kind of where we're going. It shows us kind of going up a little bit and then dropping off again over the next few years, but five years out. But with the changes of that, I don't know. I mean, it's, I look at things like the department complex going up in Sundown, you know, with 150 units there. You know, what is that going to do? They don't have that history report. You know, those kind of things. So it's kind of, it's kind of overall, in a nutshell, what I got, when I read through it, I noticed that the last page, a lot of the numbers aren't there, and I find out if it's because we didn't, it was on our end not providing them, or for some reason they didn't get out of there. So it's, again, and then, and most of the reports, it has after-five-years level, which just means they have no idea. So, and it's understandable, it's, it's a moving thing, but anyways, that was just hand sent out for your information, and if you have any questions or anything.
We do have more children on enrollment in Christian Lane, January.
Correct. We're larger this year than we were last year.
And some of those special ed.
I mean, I'd have to go, I'd have to go through it, but, you know, we build programs in-house to keep students here, so that certainly, from this, last year to this year, I don't have the, George, I've been on that.
I don't know, I don't know if it's last year. We brought better 10 kids from.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we have made a concerted effort to, you know, out there, I think, the school's in a good place, it's doing very well, I think it's got a good reputation out there right now. School choice, like I said, we've had to deny students for the first time in many years over three different classes last year. So, that's where we're at. Good place to be in, I imagine other schools would want to be in that place. Anyway, so that was informational.
Next is presentation of the FY '20 full budget.
You did have your name down, didn't you?
I just, I actually sat in on the meeting, well, not on the subcommittee, but I'll let Phil talk.
Basically, that was our first meeting, and we've just, we're just warming up the plane, so we have, we're not even taxiing out of Columbia yet, so I have absolutely nothing to tell you. We are going to meet again, hopefully, we will have numbers for you, well, we will have numbers for you at the February meeting, so we're going to, we have two other meetings scheduled before, between then and now. According to the governor's budget, we're coming out shortly, we're waiting for the account firm to populate the rest of the numbers. It's a very, it's a very extensive program that they're putting together to make the thing work, but it's, when it gets done, you're going to be able to change the whole thing instantly. You plug a number in, with the macros that are built into the program, you plug the numbers in, and everything will change. You know, how we used to, every time we made a change, we used to have to go back to the drawing board and wait for three days for the central office to be able to produce it, and we'll be able to get this thing. So we're probably not as far along at this point as we generally are, but don't panic, we'll be there.
We were assured, Phil was assured that we would be. I have nothing collaborative, haven't met yet, right?
Well, I have the budget subcommittee meeting on the 22nd at 8:00 tomorrow. It's a public meeting, anybody's welcome.
Are you going?
I expect to be there.
Okay. Did we have breakfast?
No, but we can put budget here for, I can put my expenses. You want to come with us, you can.
I have a busy day today. Let me just check my calendar here. Hold on, 22nd. You got a busy day.
Very busy day. Playing, right?
You want to see my calendar?
No, I'm just teasing. So anyway.
Yeah, actually, I do.
Eight meats on the table.
George, what do you have for us, George?
So I have a report, we'll pass it, we'll pass it around, and we'll go through it quickly.
So I think we do need to.
So just a few brief informational notes. I'm going to start off with our partnership with the College Board. We were just visited by a representative of the College Board, they're working with us on looking at the data from PSATs, and we're working with them, they've also, they have a program called Potential, which we're, which we're utilizing as well, which has to do with, basically, helping to identify students that may, that may be well-suited for AP classes, that may be slipping through cracks, and we've, so we already had one PD with the College Board, and thereafter, we also had another PD where our teachers, departmentally, were looking at the PSAT scores, and they were able to parse the data. So, that's a good thing. Number two, we've updated our school messenger capabilities, so now we're, we're sending out an automated message, either voicemail, or email, or both, if a student is absent from school. We're getting very positive feedback from parents about this, and it's, it's, it's a great way, it's an extra layer of accountability, which is wonderful. We are going to be having an informational night for families on vaping on January 16th. Scott Dredge is working on that, as well as our SRO, Brian Ravish. Number four, we are participating in Project 351, we're, we're going to be sending four eighth-grade ambassadors, one from each of the towns, to Boston for the opening ceremonies on the 19th. Jason Smith has been working on this, he's been heading this up for a while now, so I want to thank Jason for that. I wrote this on my Google Doc, so I did put a link there, it was a live link, but obviously, when you print it out, it doesn't stay live. So if anybody wants the link, actually, if you just go to YouTube and you search, you type in Project 351, you can get it. So, but that does, I would like to be able to share these things with you guys electronically. I think that would be, for me, like, that would be a nice thing to do, it would be a little bit easier, and then you could have access to them, and you could save a lot pretty easily. And also, recently, we just had a penny drive, it was just for a couple of weeks, but we raised $84.66 for the opioid task force. Also, Scott, our assistant principal, and our SRO Brian are going to be going to, Desi is sponsoring a statewide opioid awareness and prevention workshop, also on the 16th during the day, and they're going to be attending that. It's something that obviously we're, we are concerned about, and it's something that we want to try to make inroads, inroads on. And then for the important dates, I just want to point out one thing, I just got a, the January 17th four-town safety meeting that was initially scheduled for January 10th, that was just changed as of today. Everything else should be pretty much, so things are going well.
Any other questions for George? Thanks, George.
Thank you.
My portion in front is very brief, in the sense of, I've seen so many of you at so many of these subcommittee meetings, but we talked about Christian Lane, we talked about the, the collective bargaining is underway, the dates and times of those upcoming meetings are just listed there, and the bid for T, for the business manager service, we had one bid, it was TMS, surprise, surprise, and they came in at the cost that they were giving for the first half of the year, so they were awarded the bid for, until July 30th, 31st. At the 22nd meeting, at the joint meeting, we'll discuss what we're going to do next year for business services. We're here to talk about that then.
Does anybody else have anything they want to share with us?
Yeah, just one thing, I just want to offer a tip of the cap to Darius, because I've been sitting up here a long time, and I think I've received more information ahead of a meeting from him than I have from the previous five superintendents combined. Anybody who knows me knows I don't like surprises, and I appreciate very much as a member, knowing stuff ahead of time, like the thing in the newspaper about the race, it's a, it's a little thing, but I don't like going to the transfer station and have somebody say, hey, what are you guys doing? I don't know what the hell they're talking about. And I hate that. So I, the information that comes ahead of a meeting keeps me a little smarter, and I appreciate it very much.
We also have, just on the agenda, the executive session, again, we are, it's on there every single time, if you ever want to get an update on negotiations. I would say right now.
We're in good shape.
We're in good shape right now, I'd say perhaps the next one would be a good time for an update, because we haven't really got into anything where it would intrigue you.
The high school group, I know. The high school, yeah, the high school group is, is a pleasure to work with, whether it's the teachers or the.
Bob, they're all a pleasure to work with.
Yeah, 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 some of us have to work with the other group, yeah.
Hey, I have to work with the other group, too.
Camera.
It is true to say, it is true to say what Bob's saying is that right now it is going very well.
So far, everybody likes everybody.
And everybody, it's a, there's a good feeling among, in the group, even under